Good evening, everyone. I know you're still getting your food out there, but we're gonna have to get started because for whatever reason, Michael thinks he needs to catch a plane at 8:30. So we're gonna start the presentation. And what I want you folks to know is that there is a lot going on, a lot going on. I mean, all this morning, I was on three Zoom meetings with about three dozen lawyers all morning. In the afternoon, Michael and I, and Doug, and John Givens, and Naomi, and Mark, and Trevor, we're in court with Judge Cahill all afternoon. So I want you to know, although you don't see much at times, there is a lot going on with all of your cases. Last week, last week, I flew to Honolulu and testified before the legislature, the Finance Committee. And I went down there because they were trying, HECO was trying to pass a bill that only helped Hawaiian Electric. It did not help the fire victims at all. And for that reason, I thought I should go down there and we opposed the bill. Many of you've submitted letters opposing the bill. And what I wanted to make clear to Hawaiian Electric and to the legislators is if they enacted laws that actually helped you, we would be in favor of that. But those laws that they enacted literally did not help you at all. Okay? I want you to know, though, your local representative, Ellie Cochran, she was very much in favor of helping us. And she was right on it. Okay? So was Mahina Poipoi from Molokai. They were also very, very supportive of the fire victims. And so was Representative Jean Ward. Unfortunately, that's only three of about 15 people who sits on that committee. So know that there are people in there fighting for you, but there's a whole bunch that we're fighting against. Okay? And what I found when I got there is that when I was testifying before the Finance Committee, one of them asked me about the fire, and I started to explain to them what had happened. And I started to explain to them that the fire started here between pole 25 and 24. And I also explained to them what was going on with pole 7A over there. And the thing that I noticed is they really did not know anything about the fire. That they did not understand how the fire started, they did not understand how the fire progressed. And that really concerned me because these guys are passing laws affecting the fire victims, but they don't know what exactly happened in the fire. So I had launched into a full explanation, and I want you guys to be able to tell this story. This is where the lines went down and started a fire. But if you go back a step, I want you to see pole 7A. 7A is the culprit that started. This is pole 7A. It's across the street. It toppled over early in the morning, crashed through the ground. When it crashed through the ground, it pulled on the lines between pole 25 and 24. 7A is over here. And that's what snapped the lines between pole 25 and 24. The lines laid dormant for several hours until Hawaiian Electric re-energized the lines while it was sitting in the dry grass. And that's the big problem in the whole case. I also want you to see, this is a picture of the inside of pole 7A. It's totally, totally termite damaged. And these kinds of facts, we've been talking about for months and months, and I was shocked that many of the legislators had no idea about this information. So I want you guys to know that we actually have more facts, more evidence, and more information than most of the government involved. Okay? And that's because we've had our investigative team on the ground the whole time. So with that, I'm gonna turn over to Michael so he can update us and get to the airport.
Thank you. I want to apologize for calling a meeting, starting it before people are through the food line. Let me tell you why. I am a grandfather of four grandsons. My second daughter Haley is supposed to be working on your lawsuit right now, but she got herself pregnant. And she is eight and a half months pregnant. And I am terrified that she's delivering right now. So about three weeks ago, who was here for the meeting about three weeks ago on the west side? Okay. So we had a meeting, I got all jacked up. I mean, it was great, right? I felt good about what we were doing. And John Givens gave me a ride to the airport, and I said, man, this case is going so great. And the next hearing is on April the 12th. And my wife's like, you go to Maui again, I'm gonna kill you. Your daughter's about to give birth. And I said, well, we can sneak it in, she's not due till the end of the month. So I tell Givens and Jan, I said, let's do it again on April the 12th. I mean, these guys deserve our best, and I want them to know what's going on. So then I have to go home and tell my wife that I'm coming back, and she's really pissed off. She's like, you were just there. And I said, I know, but this is my favorite case. And then I tell my daughter, who's like eight and a half months pregnant, she goes, Dad, what if I go into labor while you're in Hawaii? And I was like, okay, I'm flying up, I'm literally landing at noon, I'm going to the hearing in front of Judge Cahill, and then I'm gonna update all my clients, and I'm getting on a flight at 8:40 in the evening. Now look at your watch and tell me whether this is irresponsible, right? It's a little tight, I'm hoping I'm gonna get on, but I blame Haley Watts for why I'm in a hurry, okay? So I'm sorry. Jan told you what started pole 7A, termite damage, it's just disgraceful. One thing before I start about why we're here, I want you guys to know, I mean, hopefully you got these flyers, but this is really important. We're doing meetings twice a week while I'm not here, that is designed to educate you. On the 20th, next Saturday, we have an estate planning workshop. For those of you all that had the misfortune of losing a loved one, I want you to know about that. We've got contractors, we've got estate planning people, we have my friend Jill here, who's providing that service and everything like that, so that we can take care of our loved ones who have lost their loved ones. Business planners, people who have business loss, we wanna be able to show you that. Okay? So don't wait on me to show up, okay? Because the truth of the matter is, is I'm gonna be AWOL on you for about the next month or two. Next week, I have to go to Chicago and try what's called a Xantac case. It's something I did before your fire started. It's an acid that we say causes cancer. I'll be in Chicago for the next month trying that case. I don't know when my daughter's delivering. We have a hearing in front of Judge Cahill on May the 3rd. We have another meeting on your case on May the 10th. I can't tell you when I will be back out here yet, okay? But my heart is here, it's staying on Maui. We are working so hard for you, and we're so excited about this case, okay? But if you have a loved one that was lost, come to the estate planning workshop on Saturday the 20th. If you lost business income, come to the thing at our office on the 27th, okay? This is what I did three weeks ago, when I ran, I think, to catch an airplane that time too, okay? And we had a town hall meeting out on the west side, and then it was like an hour and a half into the airport, I barely caught the flight. So what I wanna do tonight is just talk to you about the flurry of activity, how hard everybody's working, just in the last three weeks. Because I'm here to tell you, after seven and a half months of just mind-numbing slowness, this thing is picking up. You've heard about the pot boileth over? We've got these guys on the run, and it's pretty exciting, and I wanna talk to you about what we've done the last three weeks. About a week after I left here, we started sending discovery out. We served discovery requests, first on HECO, then on the Bishop Estate. We realized that the state of Hawaii has something to answer for. I've talked to you about the lack of a fire break and this and that. So we sent them a bunch of discoveries called requests for production and notices of deposition. We did it for the county of Maui. Because they don't have a lot of money, as I've told you before, I'm not real mad at them, because they don't help solve the problem. But we need to get information from them, so we asked for that information on the 28th. Now immediately on the 28th, Hawaii Electric said, well, we think your case should be dismissed. And they filed a motion to dismiss, to strike part of the master complaint, to bifurcate the case, to stay the special proceeding, whatever we can do to slow down this army that we've assembled that's gonna make us pay. Okay? To use a Texas phrase, this was bullshit. Okay? And I'm sorry for the ladies, but it's just a nonsense deal, but that's what they do. And it wasn't very well received by the judge, so nothing to worry about there. Much to my surprise, and I didn't tell any of you all this, but the Hawaii Legislature became the receptacle of another line of BS from Hawaii Electric. Let me take you back to 2017 for a second. When I get into wildfire litigation in Northern California, they burned down 5,500 houses, PG&E did, they killed 34 people, and it took them precisely three months to go to the California Legislature to ask for immunity if they did it again. I work with a young lady you may have heard of named Erin Brockovich. We went storming to the California Capitol, stopped that, and we did, we killed that bill, which is the entire reason when the same company killed 84 people and burned down 14,000 houses a year later, that they even had a cause of action. Well, believe it or not, Hawaii Electric, after killing 101 of your neighbors, had the temerity to go to the Hawaii Legislature and ask for a goodie bag of stuff, including immunity that if we do this again and kill a bunch of people. So House Bill 2700, it's actually a good idea, but it's not written right. It establishes a Hawaii wildfire relief fund incorporation to provide compensation for property damage resulting from catastrophic wildfires in the state. Sounds like a great idea. Does it apply to your damage? No, it's future wildfires. So it actually helps you, but the Senate version of this, let me just kinda give you some perspective. The legislature finds that in the wake of the 2023 Lahaina wildfire, public utilities must raise the capital to fund near-term costs and expenses to develop and implement effective plans for wildfire risk mitigation and to contribute to disaster relief funds. That is a bunch of legislative speakers like, we're not gonna help any of you, but we're gonna plan for if it happens again. Okay? Now, it sounds insensitive, but it's actually helpful to you because they've gotta go out and borrow money to pay you, and it lowers the rate of that. So we're not necessarily against it. The 2023 Lahaina wildfire has led credit ratings agencies to downgrade the credit rating for the utility to non-investment grade status. What that means is junk. Means nobody alone money unless they charge you a bunch more money. And the legislature finds that that credit rating downgrade will have a severe negative impact on ratepayers, as the cost to raise money in the future, they'll need to pay higher interest rates that they pass along to you as the ratepayers. So it is a problem. So there's a reason to come in with these bills that help defray those costs. Because in order to pay you, in order to rebuild the grid, they could jack up, you know, utility rates, but it doesn't really help. Okay? You've gotta make yourself attractive to the financial industry. The bill says the ratepayers cannot bear the full burden of mitigation efforts through securitization. The shareholders should have to contribute to part of this capitalization going forward. That's good. Okay? They caused the fire, they caused this problem, their equity in the company needs to be contributed to solving the problem, not just you, and not just the other ratepayers on the other islands. Okay? The purpose of the act is to establish and to implement the Catastrophic Wildfire Securitization Act in order to raise capital that may be used to pay for the costs and expenses arising out of catastrophic wildfires, providing a vital source of liquidity and preserving the public utility's financial viability. All sounds great. Okay? Two problems, it doesn't pay you a dime, it's future wildfires, and number two, deep into the bill, they are immunizing themselves. They have immunity if they do it again, as long as they file what's called a wildfire mitigation plan. It's garbage. It's the same thing that PG&E did in 2017, that Erin Brockovich, you know, stopped, and we went nuts. This is my buddy Mike Arias, he lives on Maui, he's got a place in California. We called an emergency meeting on Saturday, March the 30th. And again, I'd just been here eight days before, everything's going great, right? And we got notice at 11:55 PM on Friday the 29th, that the Senate Finance Committee in Honolulu was gonna hear this bill, 2922. Now, people give notice about hearing a bill when they're trying to hide it. They've gotta get 48 hours notice, so they do it Friday night at 11:55, so nobody sees it till Saturday, so they don't have time to react to it, so it flies through committee. It's just garbage. Okay? None of you got told about this, but they're trying to immunize themselves for future wildfires. So what do we do? I pissed off my wife, who was just pissed off that I was here. I said, baby, I'm going to Honolulu. So why you gotta do that? Because these assholes are trying to do what PG&E did in California. So I flew overnight to California. We had a meeting with HECO's senior executives in their lawyer's office in Honolulu, and we discussed this bill, 2922, the resolution of wildfire claims, and the mediation that we'd already scheduled on April the 9th. So to put it nicely, we're meeting with the senior level executives of HECO who want this bill to pass in the worst way. Okay? And we're negotiating. So I say, well, look, this is like what happened in California when they tried to get immunity in 2017, then they killed 84 people, and they burned down 14,000 houses. I said, we're not gonna do this to the people of Hawaii. You're not gonna be immune, you gotta take that out of the bill. And to their credit, not Hawaii Electric, but the people we were negotiating with, we're getting that immunity out of the bill. Okay? The second thing that I wanted was, you should have to use this securitization to pay the damage that you caused for everybody. In a weird way, we have not been successful on that, but it's not a bad thing. Okay? I'm telling you that the way that we get the utility to borrow the money that they need to pay you, your claims, they have to take care of this future wildfire problem. Okay? So it's step one of a three-step process. This bill solves one step, not all three. So we're kinda for it, we're kind of against it, for lack of a better word. So my wife's pissed, I'm in Honolulu, we go, and we hire a lobbyist with Pacific Business Advocates, and they're helping us through this, just to make sure we're not tripping up. There's a guy named Manny, and we all are dealing with him, we're paying him, very helpful, he sets up meetings, and I fly to Honolulu, I don't remember whether it was overnight, I just know my wife was pissed. Okay? And we say, we gotta deal with these people. Now, to their credit, a lot of you filed letters, John Givens, where are you? John Givens, over on the right side, this man on the weekend, he's a little odd, he's my buddy from 35 years back. You guys amassed almost 1,000 letters against this bill. I am here to tell you that the only reason the people of Paradise, California, were able to recover against PG&E is more than 1,000 people in Santa Rosa who were burned out of their houses in 2017 did the selfless act of raising hell in Sacramento to prevent the bill, and that's what you just did. This bill has nothing to do with helping you, but you helped the next wildfire victims, and God bless you. Okay? I literally give you all the credit in the world, and John, for putting that together. So we file 1,000 letters, they're like, holy shit. Excuse my language. Okay? And they're like, we gotta meet with these guys. So we have a meeting with some of the higher-level executives at Hawaii Electric. The third guy, Jason Ben, he is the Chief Information Officer, he's a senior vice president. I fly overnight, I don't remember the red eyes anymore, there's been so many of them, but we landed in Honolulu, our lobbyist picks us up, we go to their lawyer's office, and to their credit, this guy's in top three or four in the company, he was a gentleman. He says, how do we solve this problem? How can we get you to support the bill? And Jason Ben is a friend of the process. I really liked him, okay? So I wanna give him credit. Their lawyer is David Louie. David Louie used to be the Attorney General of the State of Hawaii. We met at their office of Kobayashi, Sugita, and Gota. They hosted us, and we started talking about, look, I can blow up this bill. My people are pissed, or we can help you get it solved if you help us get it solved. So it's very much legislative sausage making, for lack of a better word. Okay? So we're doing that. He has, as AG, past representation of the governor, the legislature, the state agencies, the employees, he's a leaded guy. Okay? And I liked him. But I know how to blow these things up in state legislatures, and I said, call the people in California and watch what we're about to do to you. We're gonna put another 1,000 letters in, you better make this right. And so, you know, we're working on it. There's where the Senate meets, we had all these meetings, it was good. Janapoe, he's my partner in this deal, but, you know, you have silent partners who don't give a damn, and people who will give up their weekend and leave their families, piss off their wives. Jan did that too. He found out what was going on, he says, I wanna come, I'll make this a high priority. And so he got on a plane from Maui, God bless you, Jan, and he says, I'll testify and get me more letters. So part of the threat that John and I had when we were talking is, you think you got letters now, wait till tomorrow. And so Jan comes, and he testifies, and we get in their grill, which was great. There's my good-looking partner. Some people say Naomi's the good-looking partner, but Jan looks good right here, you know, he's sitting here, and he is explaining for the first time to these legislators who don't have a clue what happened. And frankly, they don't care. They just have a problem to solve. And Jan pulls out pictures of a rotted-out pole, which is inexcusable. Inexcusable. And that's why 101 people lost their lives, 2,700 houses burned down, the entire town of Lahaina burned down. It's just inexcusable. Okay? And so for the first time, in the biggest tragedy in the history of the state, the press is figuring out, this is bullshit. And I know I've said that four times, and I'm really sorry for the evangelical among you, but it's just crud. Okay? This is a rotted-out pole that they should have replaced after the last hurricane in 2018, they didn't, in order to save money. And now they're running to the legislature trying to get immunity, and your lawyer, Janapoe, flew over there and called nonsense on it. Okay? Now, the one thing that I'm good at with my buddy Christian Archer, who is paying for a lot of this, is we know how to get earned media. And so John goes over there, I mean, Jan goes over there and he testifies, we explained to the legislature for the first time why the fire happened, none of them knew. Jan's telling me, I'm testifying, I just assumed everybody knew what was happening. You could see the starry eyes, they had no clue. It's not that they don't care, they had never been taught. And so your lawyer, Janapoe, flew to Honolulu, spent the time, and taught them why we're all here. And I think it made a material difference. Okay? It pissed him off. As if he didn't enjoy that enough on April the 2nd, the Honolulu Civil Beat saw that he testified, asked to meet with him, we get him the goods, he meets with him on Thursday at 2:30 with Stuart Urid at the Civil Beat, and the following article comes out, and it's just devastating to Hawaii Electric. Your lawyer, who, because of a lot of work that we've done on your behalf, we've had experts out here, you know I was out here three days after the fire, we got videos, we got all this stuff, we know what happened. But the press and the people of Hawaii didn't know. So your lawyer takes it right down to pole 7A. And termite damage, I mean, come on. Okay? It's the most inexcusable thing ever. So this is a great article, if you haven't read it, you should. So Jan takes him into his office, is showing him all the pictures that our experts have shown up, and just calls BS on the whole thing on April the 7th. All right? So in a weird way, Jan is working the court of public opinion. Because, you know, my job is to win in a court of law, but if they're gonna go cheat and get the legislature to immunize them, we need to win in the court of public opinion, and that's where Janapoe took his 50 years of great reputation and solid work for the people of Maui, and put it on the line for you. And so we got this article, it, what do you call it? My kids, it went viral, Dad, whatever the hell that means. Okay? It did, it went viral. It was on Facebook and Instagram, they called it the most detailed account so far of the Lahaina fire, points to one termite-damaged utility pole. And guys, you know, I've been out of here, what, eight, nine times since August, trying to keep you guys surprised? I feel like an idiot. Why didn't we tell the press everything we knew? We knew this all last September. Okay? So Jan's the one that did this, and kudos to him, it's pole 7A is the reason we're all here. And then it went viral, from Facebook to whatever used to be Twitter, is now called X. Anybody on social media, all the young kids are like, yeah, yeah, yeah. So everybody on the, you know, on the island of Maui and in the state of Hawaii is all of a sudden learning for the first time what your old gray-haired bald lawyer thought they already knew, but they really didn't. So we go from Facebook, we go to Twitter, we go to Reddit, and Jan, I think for the first time, explained to everybody, it wasn't just HECO started the morning fire, it was the Bishop Estate and, you know, owner of schools I can't even pronounce, I'm embarrassed, but, you know. And the bottom line is, there was a 20-foot ravine that had, you know, in effect, a fire starter kit that they could have cleaned out. We've done a lot of Google Earth work, we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, to get all the experts to come in and pin this down. Just trust me when I tell you, the liability in this case is locked down, we're not guessing. Okay? So I want you to feel good about that, your lawsuit is legit. Okay? So John Givens even gets on the bandwagon, John's not a big press guy, but he is wearing a lei in the back, and so I see this, and the Hawaii news, and that pole caused a fire and killed 100 people. It's still not properly dealt with, and he says, very bombastically, and I agree with it, we're gonna get you guys to recover, you need to get your lives back together. Okay? And it's offensive to me that something as devastating as this fire is something so stupid and so simple as termites eating out a pole. But that's where we are. Okay? And as I like to say, I don't know whether you guys have ever heard about this guy, Clarence Darrow, he's supposed to be the best lawyer in the world, and my joke is, you don't have to be Clarence Darrow to win this lawsuit, a mule could win this lawsuit. Okay? And we've known all this since about eight days after the fire. They owe you the money. Okay? But they run to the House, House Bill 2700, they try to get under the guise of covering damages for wildfires, they don't tell you it's future wildfires, they don't tell you they're getting immunity for anything they do in the future. And this bill flies through, it's introduced on January 24th, it's passed the House on March the 5th. Even after we come testify against it on the 9th, it passes the Senate, because they don't know. But then Jan gets, you know, kinda press hoggy, God bless you, and it goes viral, and all of a sudden, they're like, well, maybe everybody's in a legislative CYA, a little bit of what's called a notice of disagreement, because nobody wants to run for reelection knowing that they passed this nonsense of immunity. All right, so where's the bill? In a weird way, the bill is good. We need to be able to raise money to protect the utility from future wildfire liability. But they need to do two things. They need to be liable when they do this kinda nonsense again, and they need to pay your claims. Okay? So that's the legislative status of where we were. And literally, when I floated out of the meeting three weeks ago, and I was really jacked, and I said, let's do it again when I'm here for the hearing. I had no clue that any of this was coming up, we hadn't heard about the bill, we didn't know what was going on, my wife wasn't pissed that I went to Hawaii, when I told her I was gonna be here three weeks later, I was there a week later, you know. But the bottom line is, is that this was really important, because Jan, to his great credit, proselytized your case and what caused it to the people in power. Okay? And then now all know what's going on. So that's a big deal. Okay? New stuff. You may have heard that Judge Cahill, while all the cases were removed to federal court, but the Kula and Lahana fires, they were in state court. So he set them first, he set them for September. So all of a sudden, these guys are like, well, we need to show you. So all of a sudden, these guys are like, "Well, we need to show you electrical and wooden equipment." Remember what happened to the wooden equipment the last time they showed it to us in Lahaina? It's going to be the same nonsense. And so we're having an inspection. We're all flying our experts in. Some guy in court today said it was going to cost his client $250,000. I don't know what my guys are going to charge me, but I don't care. It's worth it. Because they're going to get preoccupied with pole 2-8-1. If you're Kula and Olinda, you're going to figure that out. It's not like as prominent as the one that Jan's talking about, 7A. But same nonsense. Okay? It's problems with the structure of a pole. It falls over trees and the like. So, I mean, we'll get into that, and we'll do all that on May the 6th. Okay? All right. Jan got so good at beating them up on the press. I found this on the internet. There's a hearing today, and Jan's going to hold a media availability. And I'm like, "Man, this guy's become a media hog." I landed, I'm giving grief about it. He didn't even know about it. But the point is, the press is on it. Okay? They understand it's a deal. Now, we had big fights today in court about several things. Number one, the defendants want plaintiff fact sheets. And they want you guys to have to answer a bunch of nonsense, Part A, Part B. If you don't answer Part A, your case gets dismissed. If you don't answer Part B, you can't get set for trial. And I'm reading all this stuff. And I look at Part A, and I was like, "Good Lord, look at all those questions." It's like 179 questions. And I was like, "Well, that's nonsense." They ask for a release of medical information. If you have a personal injury case, that's typical. They ask you to sign under penalty of perjury that everything you're saying is correct. That's typical. Okay? But here's the problem. They're just, you know, they're trying to take a bunch of people burned out of house and home, make you work yourself to death so you quit. And so on the good side, they want 144 elements of information. On the B side, in order to be able to get to trial, they want you to answer 379 questions. And so our, you know, Jan's co-lead, co-lead, you know, we just said nonsense. And so we have to answer something much shorter. For those of you that are on file, it's not going to be a big deal, but we'll get with you. Okay? The court says, "I want you to do it if you're in one of the up-country fires." Is anybody here in an up-country fire case, or everybody Lahana? Okay, that's what I thought. So it's not going to really affect us, but the people set for trial, and the up-country cases have got to do this by May 1 or whatever. All right. Question of whose cases are going to trial. So Jan and I filed something, actually John filed it. And we said, "Look, we want to do something where the death cases go first, because that applies the most pressure. And then if that doesn't settle the case, what we'd like to do is have what's called a liability trial where it's binding." And I know you can't see this, but, you know, John and I had a case in Oregon. Pacific Corps started the fire. And we did this bellwether selection thing where you pick a couple of cases to be the test plaintiffs. And they just buy off the test plaintiffs. They settle them. They paid them a god's, I mean, crazy amount of money. They had to settle. And then everybody else had to wait. So what we did to beat that is we said, "We want everybody locked into a liability-only trial. And if we lose, everybody gets zero. But if we win, everybody gets paid over and over and over again." So we're trying to suggest that. Judge Cahill, I hadn't bought it yet, but we're pushing. And we don't know what he's going to do yet, and that's okay. Some of our co-counsel, a guy named Jerry Singleton's out here. He agrees with us. He joined in our motion. We had a big hearing today. And as Jan says, we were there for three or four hours. They're saying, "We agree." I'm trying to get you a global resolution where everybody gets paid. Okay? And we've made a lot of progress in the last three weeks. We're dealing with some financial analysts, some real smart guys I dealt with in PG&E back in 2019. This guy and this guy are with a bankruptcy restructuring firm called Brown Rudnick. This guy, well, actually, they're all with Brown Rudnick. They're really strong. They've got some guys named Houlihan Loke, who are financial guys that look into the ability to pay. So what we're trying to do is we're looking at all sorts of sources to come up with the money that it takes to pay you all what's fair. Hawaii Electric owns a bank that a lot of you know about. It's worth almost a billion dollars. They can go out and borrow money based on their assets that can create some money. They can do what's called securitization, which is that bill in the legislature that we were threatening to kill if they didn't take immunity out of it. And bad news, that's raising your rates. The Senate bill says 5%. It raises $2.6 billion. It's a bad deal for everybody who's not a wildfire victim. Everybody who is, you're going to get paid by your neighbors. Okay? And yourself. In addition to public equity, the stock was trading about $40 until it, you know, this fire happened. Now it's about 10 or 11. If we announce a settlement, it'll jack up, and that'll improve their ability to come up with money. In PG&E, we demanded and got 22.19% of the company. We owned the stock. We, as a plaintiffs group, we sold it and then distributed it. We may do that here. There's insurance. Unfortunately, there's only $165 million in insurance, and it's what's called a wasting policy. Their defense lawyers eat it. Right now, there's somewhere between $50 and $80 million left. Their defense lawyers have eaten $60, $70 million. So the insurance is useless. If you invest a bunch of money, you have what's called net operating losses, where the IRS owes you money in future years. In PG&E, I took $700 million in NOLs in 2020 and $650 million in 2021. We added it to the pot. We'll see whether they've got NOLs. And of course, in this case, unlike PG&E, there are four other defendants that we're claiming have liability. The Bishop Estate, Schools, and I can explain that to you, Spectrum, okay? Hawaii Telecom, and believe it or not, the State of Hawaii. Okay? All of them have some responsibility. So these are all things that we're exploring about, how are we going to pay this bill? Because the truth of the matter is, is as nice as we want to be, they caused $7, $8, $9 billion in damage, and they're only worth two. That's a problem. So I told you guys all last fall, we're going to end up in bankruptcy court. They're trying hard not to make that happen, and we're trying hard how to help them. So what's the challenge? Well, we've got 101 deaths that are expensive, 15 to 20 burned people, some of them tragically burned, 2,700 structures burned down with a value, according to your governor, of $5.5 billion. Only $3.2 billion of that is insured. We've got Maui saying that they've got $800 million in damages. We've got insurance companies that have paid that, wanting what's called subrogation or repayment. So really, we're going to have to get the money over and above what Hawaii Electric can do from others. Okay? And there are others that have responsibility. So how are we doing this? This is the real news of the last three weeks. Number one, there's a guy named Keith Hunter that the judge loves. Apparently, he is the number-one settlement guy on Hawaii. He's got a firm called DPR, dispute resolution, dispute prevention and resolution. He is the dude. He's the number-one settlement guy in Hawaii. And the judge says, "We've got to have him." And I see why. I mean, he's settled all sorts of 1,400 construction defect cases, a big, I'm going to mispronounce this, is it Kaloka dam? Anyway, it collapsed, killed eight people. And then all the mainland guys who do what I do in California and Arizona and everyone like that, we've dealt with a guy that's with signature resolution. He is, excuse my language again, a proverbial badass. He's a big dog. Okay? His name is Lou Messenger. He used to be a judge. He was the general counsel for Walt Disney for a long time. Then he became a judge, and then he retired and became this mass tort settlement guy. Okay? And he's like the number-one guy in California in solving these big deals. He's done class actions and mass torts. He's been the claims administrator for mass torts cases. Remember that case where all the people at Hawaii, I mean, in Vegas, got shot by that dude in, you know, in the deal? There was a lawsuit. He settled that. He settled wildfires. He settled defective products. He settled something called the, well, I don't remember what it was, the something ranch, Porter Ranch. John, I know I'm late, and you're really distracting me. Okay? John's like, "Get out of here. You're going to miss your flight." I get it. Okay? So, look, the bottom line is, is that Judge Cahill understands we've got the right guy. Okay? Today, he said, "I'm going to call Judge Messenger and tell him, 'Tell me what you want,' to put him in order. The process, he's way ahead of the curve." We've got the right guy who knows how to settle these big cases. This is a picture, last Tuesday, we're all in Los Angeles at the Get to Know Each Other mediation. And it's promising. The guy in the middle is a guy that you're going to want to get to know. He's the settlement guy for Hawaii Electric. His name is Henry Weissman. He's a big dog in the energy regulatory field. He's just a big wheel, and he knows how to do these things, and that's good. I probably talked to him four times since last Tuesday. Okay? Because I'm kind of on the plaintiff's side, he's on the defense side, and things are going. We're exchanging financial information to make sure that we get every last dollar. And I've sent information to Hawaii Electric right after that meeting, to Mr. Weissman, Mr. Bryan, Mr. Fram, to the Bishop Estate, to the State of Hawaii, to Hawaii Telecom, to Spectrum Oceane. And then we're consulting with our experts about how to assess and confirm the level of their ability to pay. Because I don't represent Hawaii Electric. I don't represent the State of Hawaii. I don't represent everybody else. I represent you, and I want every dollar that they can afford to pay contributed to you. So we've got these big dogs that are good guys. Again, we met with very senior guys at Hawaii Electric last Tuesday at the offices of Kobayashi, Suguda, and Gota, including this guy, Jason Ben. And so we're working on it. But it's a challenge. I don't want to lie to you. It's going to be the hardest thing ever. It's harder than PG&E, because they had an unlimited pot with a growing rate base. You have 101 deaths. You have 15 to 20 burns. You have 2,700 structures. You have $5.5 billion in damage. $3.2 billion is insured. They want their money back. Maui's asking for $800 million. The subrogation guys want their money back. It is a problem, and they have to rebuild the grid if they're going to rebuild Lahaina. Okay? This is a math problem. There's not enough money. Our job is to figure out every penny they can pay. The problem is, is from, since the date of the fire, the stock went from 40 to about 10. Doesn't make their ability to raise money very promising. So it's tough. But as Judge Cahill said today, "My job is to assume that none of these cases settle. I hope for the best and prepare for the worst." And here's what he did today, and here's your good news. This is a good frickin' judge. He'd already set the first case for September the 9th. Today, we show up, and before anybody argues, he's got this order. And he's set case number two for November the 18th, case number three for February the 24th, case number four for June the 16th, and case number five for September 8th of 2025. As lawyers, that is what you call white-hot pressure. Okay? You have a good judge who did us a solid. His next hearing is May the 3rd. Normally, like last time, I would tell you, "Oh, I love this case. It's my favorite case." And it damn sure is. Okay? But I'm going to be in Chicago trying that Zantac case, so I may not be here, which is why I wanted to be here. We're going to meet with Judge Meisinger, the mediator, on May the 10th in Los Angeles. And we're rolling. Okay? There's a lot of good things happening. And normally, I would stay here and answer all your questions, but if I don't get out of here, I'm going to get a divorce.